Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we begin this meeting, let us pause to reflect with gratitude and purpose. May we remain mindful of the responsibility we carry and the trust placed in us by those we serve. Watch over all who are in need and bless those who dedicate themselves each day to the safety, health, and well-being of others. Guide our conversations and decisions this evening so that our work may serve the common good. Amen.
Everybody still plan to put your hand over the... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we will turn the meeting over to Chair Brightigam for the Housing Authority meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we call roll?
Commissioner Adesegi.
Here.
Commissioner Beckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Muñetón.
Here.
Commissioner Philip Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tran.
Here.
Vice Chair Dovin.
President.
And Chair Brightigam.
Here. Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. Is there anybody here who would like to address the Housing Authority? Not the City Council, but the Housing Authority specifically. Okay, seeing none, we'll close oral communications and move on to consent. Entertain a motion for the consent items.
Move it.
Second.
We have a motion in three seconds. Call for the roll call vote.
Commissioner Adesegi.
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles. Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Muñetón.
Yes.
Commissioner Philip Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tran.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dovin.
Aye.
And Chair Brightigam.
Yes.
Motion received, nine yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings.
Yes, this evening we have a public hearing for the approval of the revised Housing Authority Administrative Plan, and Housing Authority Manager Tiana Fee is here to provide that report.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the Revised Housing Authority Administrative Plan. The Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD requires all Housing Authority that administer a housing choice voucher program to establish an administrative plan. The purpose of the plan is to outline policy for carrying out the HCV program in a manner consistent with HUD requirements and local goals and objectives. The plan has undergone numerous updates and revision to accommodate regulatory changes in the program to improve procedure and to clarify discretionary policy. Revision of the administrative plan require a public hearing and an approval by the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. The 2025 Administrative Plan reflects regulatory changes in Section 102 and 104 of the Housing Opportunity Through Modernization Act, as known at HODMA, and including its discretionary policy. The revised administrative plan also includes updates in response to HUD new policies and clarification of procedures such as income exclusion, eligibility determination, quality control inspection, and updated procedure for administering the mainstream and emergency housing voucher program. The public hearing has been properly noticed on May 14 and May 16, 2025. It is recommended that the Housing Authority Commissioners conduct the public hearing and approve the revised administrative plan. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any question.
Thank you. Is there any Commissioners who have any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to address the item? Oh, we have one, Mr. Dibs. Step forward.
Yeah, I want to follow up on this hearing and prior ones. My name's Nicholas Dibs. I spoke on a hearing at the last council meeting. I was the only one in the room of the public. I just want to bring to your attention and the council's attention, or the Commissioners' attention, the importance of having these hearings and the meetings where people who can't be here physically can call in and express their views. So you're asking for hearings, you're asking for input, and yet there's a whole bunch of people in a city of 170,000 people who can't be here.
Mr. Dibs, you want to address the item?
Okay, so that's my comment for the hearing, is that you open these hearings in the future to allow people to call in and give their input. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to address the actual item? No. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to member discussion. No discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion. I'll move it in a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can I have a roll call vote?
Chair Brightigam.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dovin.
Aye.
Commissioner Tran.
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Philip Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner Muñetón.
Yes.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles.
Yes.
And Commissioner Adesegi.
Yes.
Motion received, nine yes votes.
And we'll move on, matters. Any matters from Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn back to the City Council.
Thank you very much. We will move into presentations, and we have won tonight a community spotlight recognizing the district winners and runners-up for the city's home beautification program, our Garden Grove Gems, and I believe our Assistant City Manager Matt West will read the community spotlight.
Yes, thank you. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize the district winners and runners-up of the city's home beautification program, Garden Grove Gems, which honors local homeowners for their efforts in maintaining beautiful homes that enhance the neighborhood. Earlier this evening, the mayor and City Council held a brief reception to meet and congratulate the 12 honorees representing each of our six districts. The journey to becoming a Garden Grove Gem began in April, when Garden Grove homeowners were invited to submit an online application along with a recent photo showcasing their Homes Curb appeal. In May, the community voted for their favorite homes in each of the six districts. It is now my pleasure to introduce and congratulate the 2025 Garden Grove Gems winners and runners-up. When I call your name, please come forward to receive a certificate of recognition, and then at the end we'll have a group photo with the City Council. All right, from District One, runner-up, Fred Spitzkett. District One winner, Whitney Silva.
I guess it doesn't matter, we're not voting.
District Two runner-up, Gloria and Jose Perez. Unfortunately, they're not here to accept their certificate. District Two winner, Bonnie Mazzaari. District Three runner-up, Rochelle Talbot. District Three winner, Carol Onema. Unfortunately, she's not here this evening. All right, District Four runner-up, also not in attendance, but Miles Davy. District Four winner, Michelle Hope. District Five winner, Patrick and Gigi Sullivan. I do want to note that this evening, we are inducting Patrick and Gigi into the Hall of Fame for being three-time winners. District Six runner-up, Christina Lu. And also, being inducted this evening, District Six winner for three wins is Dorothy Wilson. The city applauds your dedicated efforts in making your homes Garden Grove Gems and keeping our community looking its very best. Congratulations.
Congratulations, you guys. Thank you. Congratulations. Single file in here. You're holding out on me. You're following the leader. There you go. Hold it. Hey, Lisa? Are you coming in there, Lisa?
Yeah, grab the phone.
Yeah, this is...
We didn't get any links last week, so I figured...
Okay, we're doing a new video on three. So if you want to give me a little wave or a smile?
Where's our gnome? Yeah, no gnomes.
One, two, three.
Gnome sweet, gnome.
Congratulations.
Got it, thank you so much.
Congratulations, everyone. We're going to induct all of you Hall of Famers, okay? Congratulations. 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 It's okay. Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, there he is. I don't remember hearing that name called. Yeah, just get up here and take a picture.
Well, that's okay.
Come on in.
Come on in.
That's good, yeah. You're going to get special. Let's do it, let's do it, let's do it. Okay. There we go. All right. Yay.
Smile. And got it, thank you so much.
Awesome, congratulations, sir. Thank you so much. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Get special tonight. Special pictures. Thank you. We hope to see you next year. Lock that mosaic. Got to get it. Gloria? All right, with that, we'll move on to presentation number two.
Yes, this evening we have a presentation for water safety and drowning prevention presentation by Chief Covey with the Orange County Fire Authority.
Put this in tall mode here. Good evening, Mayor Klumpenstein, Council, City Manager Kim, and all your residents. Today, I come to you with some bad news and some good news. So unfortunately, I have to go through the bad news first as a PowerPoint here. I think my PowerPoint operator may have left.
Continue with the...
Oh, he's gonna do it for me. I can't see it.
And neither is this one.
I'll just give one second for technical difficulties. Okay. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and try... It'll help if I can see it, thank you. That's my notes as I see it. Okay, if we can go to the next slide, thank you. This one, we're actually going to flash through. If you could press it forward twice, that would be great. A little bit of sensitive video there with our audience that's here. I'm going to bypass that because of some sensitivity to it. Just fast forward twice, one more real quick. There you go, thank you. Okay, so, simple definition here of drowning. It's very cold and calculated when you see a slide like this, because it just says fatal and non-fatal. But when you really dive into those words, it's so much stronger than that. And understand that even in non-fatal, for every fatal accident, there's five non-fadals. And out of those five non-fadals, many of those are life-changing disablements during it. So it may say non-able, not fatal, but there's so much more to it. Could be the damages to the child, or could be the damages to the family. This is an incredibly emotional event for a family that we're going to have an opportunity to share tonight. So I'm going to try to fly through these slides because I'm just a division chief talking about pool safety. I do have an example today that should really reinforce it with first-person story of success. Go ahead. Next slide, please, thank you. Go ahead, next slide again, twice, one more. Okay, going into 2024, last year, next slide, please. We did have 111 drownings last year, okay? So that seems to be an unreasonable trend. You'll see as I continue here, in that 45 of those incidents were under the age of four. But when you look a little bit deeper down, this doesn't just affect young children. Look at 35 to 65-plus, there's 44 of those. Okay, so it's not just the children we have to watch out for. We do have to watch out for each other as adults as well. Next slide. It only takes two inches of water. We did have 104 in 2023 when I talked to you, and I was kind of excited that it was down a little bit, but gosh, we bumped right back up. Next slide. If you look at the trend here from 2015, that's what I'm talking about, the lowest of 97 to up to over 120. So as much as we're campaigning and trying to tell the story of prevention, it's not making a huge difference, which is very disappointing to me. This is, I'm very passionate about this. If you ask my fellow first responders in law enforcement and the fire service, this is the worst call we go on when we go on these drownings. You want to hear grief sounds that you've never heard in your life until you hear a parent on the front yard screaming because they've lost a child. Unfortunately, and it's going to hit home maybe a little bit to the council here, go ahead and forward. This is till 2024, I'll talk about in a second here. So if you look at the sources here, backyard pools and community spas are two-thirds of the incidents. Why is that the case? It's because that's usually the most busy, most populated, lot going on, and most likely the cause for distractions, because we have so many folks involved in a pool. You get distracted by a phone, you get distracted by going to get a meal, whatever, and someone loses track with watching the water. Go ahead. In 2025, this is where it really is going to hit home. We've already had eight children drown and 12 adults, and we're only a month into the summer season here. So in the non-fatal, you'll see eight. Unfortunately, I do have to update that to there was a fatality, and it was a council member from one of the contract cities that OCFA represents lost their child. So it's not, this can affect anybody, and it just takes a second. Keep going. As you can see, it doesn't take long once you do lose a child or a person underwater, how long it starts taking for permanent damage to occur, as quickly as five minutes, and non-recoverable in 10 minutes. Go ahead. Here's the things we want to preach, ABCs, okay? A is for active adult, B is for barriers, and C is for classes. Next slide. Like I said, I'm going to try to fly through this, keep going. So active adult supervision. We try to call it the Water Watcher. I do have tags with me if anybody wants a tag. It's almost like passing on the baton. If you're in charge of watching the water, there is no distractions, you have nothing else to do. Our kids are our prized possessions. There's nothing more important to us than our children. So you take that responsibility by holding that Water Watcher tag, and then when you're done, you're going to give it off to someone else who's going to watch the water. I just can't emphasize enough, no distractions. It doesn't take long at all. Keep going. Barriers, flash through it, some stuff's going to pop up. In 2017, there was barriers required for us to have safe pools. You have to have a minimum of seven, or excuse me, two of the seven requirements to block off a pool area and make it inaccessible for accidentally getting into the pool area. Go to the next one. Keep going, please. Classes, okay? I'm happy to tell you that your Parks and Recs Department does have swimming classes. Clearly, that's the number-one way to prevent drownings, and that is to go to school and learn how to do it, okay? The other part of that I want to really emphasize is CPR. The new American Heart Association CPR, in my 31-year career, I used to joke that the only reason American Heart would change their CPR requirements is because they needed to sell more books. But I'm telling you, the stuff that we do now is the best outcomes I've seen in my 31-year career of people saving, getting saved by CPR. I saved a friend of mine on a basketball court. Needles to say all the stuff that we've done in, at work as a fire department, and then we have a child here today that was saved due to CPR. Okay. Flotation devices, that opening video I flashed through, I didn't want to show because of the audience, is a child with a flotation device that takes it off, goes to the pool and falls in the pool. Flotation devices, making sure that if your child cannot swim, you're able to at least protect them by flotation devices. Here's some of those myths, you know? The myth is that you see on TV people screaming for help, you know, looking for them. The reality, it is a quiet, silent accident. Sometimes the lifeguards talk about someone's in distress, their head will be back, and they'll be doing this dog paddle. That's the thing they watch for. But most of the time, especially with children that don't know how to swim, they just slip underwater, no one hears and no one sees them. These are some of the quick ten reminders for pool safety tips. Learn to swim, no distractions, swim with someone, wear a jacket, use layers of protection, keep away from storm drains. Don't forget that those storm drains are sucking in a lot of water to go through the filter, so people get trapped in the storm, in the drains, not storm drains, the drains at the bottom of the pool. Go ahead. Fast, silent, preventable, that's the issues here. This is 100% preventable. But when accidents happen, the key to survival here is when you have that chain of, chain of response, right, or ABCs, and you get in to see the chains of survival, everybody stepping in and doing their role can have a positive outcome. And that's what I want to talk about today. See, on May 10th, we had a seven-year-old who's in this room slip into a pool, go under, and was not noticed. He was pulled out in full cardiac arrest, not breathing, his heart not beating. Thankfully, members of the family and friends that were there, one was an off-duty life, but not off, a former lifeguard. That's a stat you should know. If you don't know how to swim, if you're swimming near a lifeguard, you have one in 18 million chance of drowning. So swim near a lifeguard if you don't know how to swim, or be around a lifeguard. And then CPR. Both of those members jumped in, 911 was called, your local unit from right here, Truck 81 responded, and through that chain of custody of taking care of the child from being found, pulled out of the pool, CPR initiated, 911 called, transported to the hospital, Ezekiel was saved. And the family is here. This is an incredibly strong family to come share this story with you guys. To me, it's much more powerful than a fire chief up here talking about preventing tragedy, because it is a tragedy as bad as it gets. So with that, I'd like to introduce Zoe Granados, Zo Granados, that's the parent of Ezekiel, it's mom, if she could come up. She wanted to say a few words here.
Hello. Okay, sorry. On May 10th, we experienced every parent's worst nightmare, followed by a true miracle, where we nearly lost our only son Ezekiel. God gave us a second chance with him, and now we want to share our story in hopes that our mistakes are not repeated and no other family goes through a similar traumatic event. We grew comfortable and assumed Ezekiel was fine in the shallow end of the pool at a birthday party. There were adults in and around the pool, and we figured he'd be fine. Accidents happen in an instant, though. He slipped from the shallow end to the deep end and drowned. By the grace of God, there were angels there, Chris and Crystal, that jumped into action and were able to pull him out, render CPR, and bring him back. Because of what we experienced, we felt compelled to share about water safety. We learned that May is Water Safety Month, and we believe it should be highlighted all summer long. We, as parents, are eager to sign up our kids at activities such as soccer, baseball, ballet, karate. These are all great, and our kids should participate, but swimming lessons can save their lives. Please enroll your kids in swimming lessons as soon as possible. If you will be going to or hosting a pool party, please designate an adult to watch everyone in the pool, take turns, that way someone is always watching and is not distracted. We are incredibly grateful to everyone that stepped in and saved Ezekiel's life. We will never have the words to articulate how incredibly thankful we are to everyone involved. We hope by sharing our story, it motivates someone to sign up their kids for swimming lessons. It can save lives and spare another family from any pain. Thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. I can't think of a stronger message than that. With us today is Chris Montenegro. He's a former City of Santa Ana lifeguard. Was there for many years, I think six to nine years, I'm trying to remember the number. He was all the way up to a supervisor, he's an instructor, a swim coach, and stuff. So you talk about one of the ideal people to be there and be part of this, and he'd like to speak to you as well.
Thank you, Craig. So again, my name is Chris Montenegro, and fortunate enough to be calling Zoe family, as we were friends first before this happened, and now it's inseparable, so I'm emotional about it because it's my son's best friend, and I was able to help at this point. So I'm here because of the ABCs, and Cs are the classes, and that's what I wanted to touch I learned this skillset 20 years ago. I didn't think I would ever use them, never expected it to be the case. And so being there just makes it that much, call it more special to be able to help out. My prior training allowed me to be able to help Zeke in the necessary manner. Recognizing and reacting to the situation properly allowed for his life to be unaffected and not altered. Thankfully, this was an incident we could all learn from, and it's the reason why we're here tonight. So I ask everyone with children, be responsible. Please, if you're a nanny, a caretaker, a grandparent, or you simply have a pool at home, be prepared. Take the right steps and learn the basic first aid and CPR. You could be the difference in any given situation. And oftentimes, the thing that hits home for me is a lot of people train or go through the classes, not just taking it as a joke, because it's a precursor for employment. And so something so trivial becomes so necessary in a situation, a basketball court, water. So again, if you could help a loved one in an emergency situation. Crystal will be next to come up here and speak, and she's a medical assistant. She just got recertified in December. I haven't been certified in a long time, but the skillset never left. So the importance of being recertified over the years is critical, and I'm going to continue to promote that with everybody. So again, water, especially pools, are fun, but could become dangerous in an instant. So this summer, please be prepared and stay safe. Thank you.
So Chris did kind of prompt there a little bit, but Crystal Delatorre was there as well. She's CPR-trained as a medical assistant. And between the two of them, they provided that time for us to be able to respond there, step in, and finish the care, and save Ezekiel. So Crystal would like to come up and talk as well.
I'm going to try and keep it short and sweet for you guys. I don't have fancy paper, though. I just wanted to touch base on the importance of being a parent who is CPR-certified, and I'm going to read that off here. So as a parent, I think it's important to be CPR-certified, mainly because it's going to give you that confidence of knowing what to do in a stressful situation and reduce the chances of freezing up or making mistakes in an emergency. It will give you a source of comfort and reassurance knowing you have the ability to act quickly and effectively to protect your children, especially when seconds matter. I believe being certified overall encourages a proactive mindset towards child safety and encourages parents to think about potential risks and taking the steps to reduce them. That's all I have.
So, yeah, I could talk about OCFA. This is drowning prevention month. On June 13th, just a short while ago, a couple weeks ago, we did have a water safety pledge pop up at one of our fire stations, and we had 100 people attend. Very encouraging, so that's something we're going to try to continue doing in the future, try to get the word out even a little bit more than we're able to this time. This was kind of an OCFA reaction that things aren't... Recognizing and reacting to the situation properly allowed for his life to be unaffected and not altered. Thankfully, this was an incident we could all learn from, and it's the reason why we're here tonight. So I ask everyone with children, be responsible. Please, if you're a nanny, a caretaker, a grandparent, or you simply have a pool at home, be prepared. Take the right steps and learn the basic first aid and CPR. You could be the difference in any given situation. And oftentimes, the thing that hits home for me is a lot of people train or go through the classes, not, not just taking it as a joke because it's for, it's a precursor for employment. And so something so trivial becomes so necessary in a, in a situation, basketball court, water. So again, if you could help a loved one in an emergency situation. Crystal will be next to come up here and speak, and she's a medical assistant. She just got recertified in December. I haven't been certified in a long time, but the skillset never left. So the importance of being recertified over the years is critical. And I, I'm going to continue to promote that with everybody. So again, water and especially pools are fun, but could become dangerous in an instant. So this summer, please be prepared and stay safe. Thank you.
So Chris did kind of prompt there a little bit, but Crystal Delatorre was there as well. She CPR trained as a medical assistant. And, and between the two of them, they provided that time for us to be able to respond there, step in and finish the care and save Ezekiel. So Crystal would like to come up and talk as well.
I'm going to try and keep it short and sweet for you guys. I don't have fancy paper, though. I kind of just wanted to touch base on the importance of being a parent who is CPR certified. And I'm going to read that off here. So as a parent, I think it's important to be CPR certified mainly because it's going to give you that confidence of knowing what to do in a stressful situation and reduce the chances of freezing up or making mistakes in an emergency. It will give you a source of comfort and reassurance knowing you have the ability to act quickly and effectively to protect your children, especially when seconds matter. I believe being certified overall encourages a proactive mindset towards child safety and encourages parents to think about potential risks and taking the steps to reduce them.
So yeah, I could talk about OCFA. This is drowning prevention month. On June 13th, just a short while ago, a couple of weeks ago, we did have a water safety pledge pop up at one of our fire stations, and we had 100 people attend. Very encouraging, so that's something we're going to try to continue doing in the future. Try to get the word out even a little bit more than we're able to this time. This was kind of an OCFA reaction that things aren't working, we need to try harder. And we were able to partner with the city, a couple of the council members were there, and, and we're able to get a really good, strong message out about this water safety pledge and watching the water. So if I understand correctly, Mayor Klaufenstein, you have some recognitions for, for the two rescuers here, Crystal and Chris. For the group, today is the first day the whole group has been able to get back together and have a reunion from that May 10th thing. So it's a very emotional day for them as well.
One, two, three. Thank you.
And Ezekiel, can you stand up and say hi to the council? There he is. That's it. That's what it's about, right there. Mayor, thank you for your time. I'm available for you if you guys have any further questions.
I just want to thank you so much for this presentation. It's obviously very timely since it is the summer months and these statistics are very sobering and quite staggering. This seems so simple, but it's, it really can save lives. And so bringing this awareness and bringing forward this to us today, and then to be able to see all of you here, what a, what a blessing to have this young boy still with us. And for people that go through that certification, thank you for, for your heroism. We really appreciate it. This is very timely, as we know that there's been some tragedy in our county most recently. So again, thank you, Chief, so much for bringing this forward. It's extremely important. And if you have children this summer, please, please, please get CPR certified, make sure they're in proper flotation devices. Please reach out for more information. It is here, it's a resource to you as a community. We want to make sure everyone has a safe summer. Thank you again, Chief, we appreciate you.
Yeah, that's a good point to remind is that Parks and Rec does have classes available. You can go to the city website, sign up for them, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mayor, would I be able to make another comment? I also want to, want to thank Chief Covey because they've partnered with a local organization called Friends of Andy and Aiden, and they've been providing water safety training to kids that are on the spectrum because it's so important to be able to also have that special training in a way that kids that are neurodivergent are going to be able to understand it. So I want to thank you for the work that you've been doing in that effect as well. And know that there are organizations like Friends of Andy and Aiden that are doing that work as well. If you're a parent that has a child that is neurodivergent, there's organizations out there that can provide resources. And, and thank you again, Chief.
That's a very good comment, Councilwoman Iresdegy. One of the drownings this year was a 16-year-old child on the spectrum. So that is definitely an at-risk community and is an important one to not forget.
May I? I will not repeat what the council and the mayor already said, but just want to say thank you so much for doing this. I know that we saw this every year, but now it's right before July 4th where everybody is going to get together, especially for our family. We have the pool and people, you know, having fun and talking, but having, you know, listening to what you said, having the paten or whatever, that destiny person, that's super important. So thank you. I took a picture and I will make sure to pass it out to everyone, but thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. With that, we move on to oral communication. First up is Joe Nightingale.
Good afternoon. My reason for being here is I've been attempting to help a homeless lady who lives on the street. She has what's called Parkinson's disease, and it's terminal. All she has in this world is a little service dog. I've tried various organizations, I've attempted to see the mayor at least four times. I tried to talk to the city attorney. I've gotten through of, I've gotten ahold of all kinds of organizations from, from outreach and the CAT services. And after initial contact, no one's ever followed up to help her. Now, this lady has a disease that's going to take her life. She's going to die on the street like a dog. All I'm trying to do is to get her home, get her home, get her a home rather. And this is my last option. Now, I don't want to turn to social media, but the city of Garden Grove hasn't been very helpful in me trying to get her a home. I've tried to see the mayor at least three or four times. I've talked to a couple of her aides, one lady named Pam, another lady named Mia. I have very detailed journal here of everybody I've talked to and, and no one's followed through with this. This lady, if you would take a look at her, you would cry. So that's why I'm here. And I'd rather, I'd rather not go to social media or anywhere else, but what options do I have? So saying that, I guess that's all I really have to tell you. I mean, if you were to see this lady, like I said, you would cry. I mean, she's dirty, she's, and she has Parkinson's. Like I said, it affects, anybody know about Parkinson's? It affects your nervous system and now she's, she acts like she has Parkinson's shakes. You can't understand her because it's affected her vocal, her vocal ability. And it's pretty sad.
Thank you, sir. Normally, oral communication isn't a back and forth conversation, but we will make sure someone reaches out to you. I apologize that those meeting attempts did not, did not get to me. Obviously, we want to do everything we can to, to help this person, and we help the homeless community every single day, so we will get your information and make sure that we find a way to help her, okay?
Well, I'll be back at your office tomorrow. Like I said, I know the way very well.
That sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Nick Dibs.
Mayor Klaufenstein, members of the council, my name's Nicholas Dibs. We've had some really good people here. The, the preventing drowning is under the theme of be prepared. Our invocation given by Matt West spoke about the importance of having the right attitude towards things. We need to be prepared. Now, what I'm about to say, how I kind of got involved in this and why I'm asking you to put this sample resolution that could be tweaked for the city of Garden Grove on the agenda to help mental health and reduce screen time and improve youth mental health is because in around October of 2019, before the pandemic, we had a fifth grader who was attending Hazard Elementary School in Santa Ana, which is part of Garden Grove Unified, commit suicide. And the article, one of the articles interviewed three of her classmates, and they said she was being bullied on Instagram. So we do have, they say an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. This is the prevention. The prevention is to educate the community, bring, increase awareness about the harmful effects of social media, screen time addiction, esports addiction, and so on, which is causing harm. They are, there's 13 footnotes on the backside along with a QR code on the back of what you've been given, and I've also emailed this to you before the meeting. And so Orange County Health Department, and this is the Orange County in North Carolina, in Hillsboro, North Carolina, the Orange County Health Department and the, and the Health, Orange County Health Board have put this concise resolution together, and it's a model for what we can do here. And so I'm asking you as a council to put this on the agenda, have the city staff, if you want me to help with it, I'll do that. We'll tweak it for Garden Grove and put it out there as part of our efforts to help educate parents and students and so on. And it's important, the 2023, the Surgeon General issued an advisory on this, that adolescents represents a critical time in the brain development, and studies have reported social media may result in addictive behavior, decrease attention and so on, and decrease test scores. Eating disorders, body dissatisfaction, suicidal id- ideation, setting screen time limits at home, avoiding screen, screens before bedtime. The, the, these screens are ubiquitous in our society and they have a, a positive function, but at the same time, too much with the young children and the teens is not good. And the evidence is there. I mean, we, so I'm asking you, all of you, to please put this on the agenda for the next meeting or soon thereafter. And you can contact me if you have any questions. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
Courtney Cook.
Hi, everyone. I'm a resident of Garden Grove in District Five. I live down the street on Euclid, and I have my comments on my phone, so. If it's just me here to speak, maybe there's a reason why, by the way, and based on his comments earlier, you should take them seriously. So since the last council meeting on June 10th, we've all seen videos of armed men snatching people off the streets in every district of Garden Grove. The one that really got to me was actually one without a person in it, and it was just a Pletta cart on the sidewalk, and the person had obviously been taken, which is, I still like, it's hard to look at. And I've seen like dozens of arrests in the last few weeks, so that one was the one that was really hard for me. But we still have yet to even hear from half the city council members. Families are being separated, businesses are shutting down early, and people are too scared to leave their homes. Meanwhile, everyone still had time to attend the State of the City party. I hope you guys had fun. As a volunteer for Orange County Rapid Response Network, we've received calls from residents, lawyers, business owners and family members here in Garden Grove and around Orange County who are afraid to leave their house or have even seen ICE agents come to their restaurants and businesses to intimidate and detain people. This weekend, we canvassed over 100 businesses in Little Saigon to help people understand their rights and protect employees, many of whom are citizens with work permits. We heard complaints of racial profiling and how everybody is being treated like a criminal in Garden Grove. People report being afraid to call the police and shared specific incidents of police intentionally calling ICE to detain day laborers despite being called for something unrelated. They also shared that ICE agents are being impersonated by armed individuals, and the community can't call the police since they can't identify who's an actual agent. Here's some ideas, since you guys need a little bit of help. Pass a sanctuosity resolution, full transparency on ICE's collaboration with Garden Grove PD, how often are police acting as ICE's personal security gang? Create a legal defense fund for residents, financial aid, financial assistance for families who lost providers who were kidnapped. End all cooperation with ICE. Provide businesses with signage and know your rights education. For example, this weekend, I ran into Santa Ana Mayor Pro Tem Ben Vasquez handing out signs at businesses to keep employees safe in his district. And also, reach out to organizations like OC Rapid Response Network or VietRise. Talk about community safety, thanks to the council members who already have. All I hear from y'all is about public safety, but right now, the biggest threat to Garden Grove is the militarized ICE agents and police collaborators. When will this issue be local enough to act? Thanks.
Joshua Kim.
Good evening, Mayor Klaufenstein, council members, city managers. Well, thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak before you. What I'm going to share with you is not as it relates to the agenda, but rather I want to voice my deep appreciation to the city, city council members, and also to the city managers. My name is Joshua Kim. I own a restaurant in District One, Value and Chapman, called Thirsty Cow Cream Barbecue. We opened, well, actually, as a matter of fact, I'd like to share with you, I, I opened today, thanks to your help. Thank you. So it's been a really long and arduous 19-month, 20-month journey. This is my first time opening up, well, actually building a restaurant. When I first started, I was clothesless, but with your guidance, I was able to build a beautiful restaurant, and I'd like to thank a few special individuals. Councilman Bredegum has been a, 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 a person who I can, who provide a lot of guidance and who's been nothing but very supportive. You know, having been recently appointed as the Director of OCFA, he actually facilitated a lot of, you know, communications with the OCFA, which I deeply appreciated. Some of the other city managers and city employees, I'd like to thank David Dent, Phil Guend, Nikki Wentzal, and then, oh, Lisa Kim, of course. Actually, she, you know, despite her being, you know, super busy, she took the time out of her busy schedule to check with me time to time, which I deeply appreciated. So we're open, we're so, so, so open today, and, you know, I like to be a creative place where people can come and have a wonderful dining experience. But again, thank you so much for all the help, and without your help, I wouldn't be able to open today. Thank you.
All right, that is all the pink cards that I have for oral communication. So with that, we will recess. And move on to successor agency. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Member Bredegum?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member Tran? All right. Here. And Member Doveen? I'm Bredegum. Here.
He did? Okay, then if you have a card, yeah, come on up. I, I'm sorry, I don't have it. All right, so we need to recess the successor agency.
Just reopen.
We're reopening the city council meeting. We're going to ask you to come up as our last speaker under oral communications, and then we'll get back to the successor. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Kyle Mason, and I apologize I've missed the last two meetings. I'm battling cancer. So, but I'm not stopping. But my main concerns are the streets and the safety. We've got a lot of homeless that are around the mall area from the Women's Club on Gilbert Chapman area. We've got people just hang living. I have one gentleman who's been living in a motorhome that hasn't been registered in 10 years. He's been sitting in the Walmart, dropping his Blackwater. Do you guys know what that is? The Walmart parking lot stinks very bad. Well, I noticed the motorhome disappeared three days ago, and the guy's been sitting near the Sees Candies on Chapman on the ground. So I don't know if you guys got the motorhome or what's going on. But these homeless people and that riverbed, main concern is putting the fences up. We need fences on that riverbed. There are a lot of people down in there. I don't know what it takes to put a stop to it. Once I get the feeling a little bit better, I've got a wrecking crew and we're going to go off and we're going to clean up the area. So I would like to see the city clean it up before I do. Please? I mean, I've asked and asked. I've even called the police and they didn't even show up one particular time on Sunday. I've even got video of gentlemen doing drugs and pulling the chain that, the chain used to cover the Women's Club parking lot, the entrance, and it was down in the hole. I even hollered at him, what are you stealing it? And he even said himself, no, I'm down there smoking dope. I mean, I've got it on video. What does it take to get somebody out here to put a door or something to stop people from going down there? And they get the fences up on that one address to go all the way back and to clean up the Walmart parking lot. There's people sitting in the Women's Club parking lot, and then they go over to the back of Walmart. I don't know what kind of fictitious things are going on, but, you know, when you unload something from a store into a van, that's one thing. But when I see these two vans and they go over to the store and they're unloading from one van to another van, there's something not right there. There's nothing going into that store. I think some things would be looked into. Again, I'm a security guard and I do a lot of observation around the whole area of the Social Security. West, he's a security guard of the Social Security Building, and he says the same thing. And the video that they have, I don't know if you have access to that or not, but it's unreal. Again, I'm just trying to clean up a lot of the homeless. There's a company in Long Beach, I guess it's buying the buildings up around us because half my neighborhood is gone. What they do is they raise the price to $2,000 for a one-bedroom, and they can't do anything. All the people are gone. My time's up. I'm sorry. We'll talk to you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, with that, we will recess city council and move on to other legislative bodies. We'll move to successor, and Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Bridgum?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member, Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin? Member Adesegi?
Here.
Vice Chair Munyaton?
Here.
And Chair Klaffenstein?
Here.
All right, Oral Communications was held simultaneously with other legislative bodies. We'll move on to the consent calendar. I have one item, receive and file the minutes from June 10th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Takes us on to matters. Anything from members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and head to sanitary district. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Bridgum?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
President.
Member Munyaton?
Here.
Member Adesegi?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Yeah.
And President Klaffenstein?
Here.
Once again, we've handled oral communication business. We will move on to the consent calendar. I have two items, receive and file the minutes, and approval of an amendment to the Solid Waste Consulting Services Agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
That takes us on to matters. Anything from board members? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn and head back to city council. And that takes us on to our consent calendar. We can take this simultaneously unless any of my colleagues wish to pull an item this evening. I have a motion and a second on consent. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, with that, it takes us on to items for consideration, number sixteen.
Item sixteen this evening is a, an award of contract to Rady's Custom Upholstery to provide parts and repairs for city-owned vehicles and equipment on an as-needed basis. And our Public Works Director, I think, will provide the report? Yes, our Public Works Director, Bill Murray, will provide the report.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez, Mrs. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, city council is being asked to award a contract to Rady's Custom Upholstery for on-call parts and repairs of a upholstery and related interior items for city vehicles and equipment. The proposed contract is for $80,000 annually for the next five years. It should be sufficient to cover the city's needs over that period of time. Staff received an open one responsive proposal on April 30th, 2025. Staff reviewed and evaluated the proposal and determined that Rady, Rady's Custom Upholstery provided a responsive bid and recommends the award of the contract. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the company can begin maintenance and repair work within the next month. This purchase will be paid for through the Public Works operating budget. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, any questions?
I got one question.
Sure.
Is it Raddies or Radies? I pass that sign like all the time, and I'm like, okay. Raddies? Yeah, it sounds cool, right? All right. It's rad. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
We'll move to item seventeen.
Item seventeen is award of contract to Hardy and Harper, Inc. for the 2025 Residential Streets Improvement Project, city project number CP 1446,000, and Director Bill Murray will provide the report.
Thank Ms. Vasquez, Mrs. Mayor, and the members of the council. Tonight, city council is being asked to award a contract to Hardy and Harper for the 2025 Residential Streets Improvement Project. The street segments are shown on your attachment number two of the staff report and are labeled as location map. In general, the area to be repaired is bounded by Lampton Avenue to the north, Ninth Street to the west, West Street to the east, and Stamford to the south. In general, the project will provide cold milling, roadway excavation, removing and reconstructing failed pavement areas, asphalt paving, slurry seal, cement concrete work, adjustment of utility covers to finish grade, restoration of all the traffic striping, and the reestablish of the centerline ties and monuments. All this work is to be completed at a cost of almost $900,000. Staff received an open nine qualified bids on June 4th of this year and determined that Hardy and Harper, Inc. to be the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in August and should be complete before Thanksgiving. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for using gas tax and CDBG funds, which is the Community Development Block Grant Funds. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, comments, questions, a motion?
Question?
Yes.
So I'm reading it as a, on an as-needed basis, so we may not necessarily spend up to the mill bring, right?
That's the next item, sir.
Oh, sorry.
But that's correct.
Any other comments or questions?
The general area is District Five, basically, street improvements and whatnot.
I don't have the, I'd have to look it up and see which district it's in, sir.
Actually, I think it's, this is three, two, because I, I come out and observe and talk to the worker.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Move it.
I know it's not in my district, because I checked.
Can I talk a little bit about this?
Please.
Yeah, since I, I want to talk about and to the, our public work department, why I was going now, observe the, the work out there at the, up there working place, and I communicate with them. At those time, I got a couple very positive from my constituents, and they, they showed their appreciation for the public work that we do out there for them. And therefore, I would like to myself thank the city manager, Lisa Kim, our public work department for the renovation of our infrastructure. I appreciate your works, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I believe you made a motion as well, council member. Did we have a second?
Yeah.
I would have a second, yeah.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Now we're on to item eighteen.
Item eighteen is award of contracts to All American Asphalt, Calmat Company, Doing Business as Vulcan Materials Company, and RJ Noble Company for asphalt products on an as-needed basis, and Director Bill Murray will provide that report.
Ms. Mayor, and members of the council, tonight, city council is being asked to award three contracts to All American Asphalt, Vulcan Materials, and RJ Noble for asphalt, asphalt delivery, which we call will-call service, and that will be on an as-needed basis. The asphalt is delivered for city crews to repair street segments as needed, so it'll be potholes or winterizing, or sometimes we also get called in by the water and sewer department to assist them on their, with their repairs. We need the asphalt for that. The three combined contracts will, will not exceed $1.3 million during the next fiscal year. Staff received and opened three responsive bids on May 9th, 2025. These three vendors are close in proximity to the city and able to provide the city with reliable hot mucks, hot mix delivery at the required temperature and on the as-needed basis. So when we call them, one of the three would generally be available to, to make that delivery. There are three different prices. If you look through the, the bid schedule, we always start with the lowest and work our way to the highest. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, all the companies can begin providing their product to the city beginning next month. Funding has been allocated in the Public Works Department adopted operating budget. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Colleagues?
I have a question, Bill, and I forgot to ask this during agenda review, but will any of this asphalt be going towards the improvements at the Harbor and Garden Grove Boulevard intersection?
We're hoping not. You know, unless the, the intersection gets tore up before the, the major work is done, we, we hope to kind of distance ourselves from that. That project will be responsible for all that asphalt work. And this is for our maintenance crews that are, that are out filling potholes, what we call winterizing streets, so we'll put a, a light asphalt patch on the streets that look like they're going to experience a lot of problems during the winter coming up. And like I said, also repairing utility trenches and stuff that we actually create that problem when we do our water and sewer repairs.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Bill.
All right, yeah, one sec. Councilmember Bridgum and then Tran.
Yeah, honestly, these kind of contracts are, it's good that we bring them up and we discuss them because, you know, these are those, you know, quality of life issues that people have when they have a pothole in front of their house, or, you know, the, you know, and if you don't have these contracts in place prior, then you gotta wait months to get it fixed. And so it's nice to have these in place so it can be fixed a little more exp- a little quickly, a little more quickly. I was gonna say expeditiously, but I forgot how to say that. So with that being said, I'd like to make the motion, and I'll let Cindy make her comments.
Just a quick comment. I go to the paperwork and noticed that at the beginning, there's only one bid, right? And then our staff, our staff return it, and then later on, we have three bids. And by reading this, you actually award all three company, right? And each one with a different amount, which is, this is really, in a way, I feel that this is a great decision where that, you know, the people put in the bid, and each one of them get to award part of the contract. So just want to say thank to you. It would be easier for you just to pick one and then go with it, but you were able to do, you know, make sure that everybody get part of that, so thank you.
Director Murray, is there, I think at one time I remember you mentioning, like, was there an asphalt shortage, issues with that? Is that something that's still ongoing, or is that riding itself over time?
So far, we haven't experienced too many problems, because we don't have, we haven't, we have asphalt, asphalt shortages whenever there's a major freeway reconstruction project that's going on near us, such as the 405 work that is, was going on. That, that caused a lot, basically, everybody in the, in the area was supplying asphalt to that project.
Sure.
So far, so good. We're doing really well with asphalt right now.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, second. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us to ordinances presented for second reading and adoption, number nineteen.
Yes, this is just a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2965 entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Establishing the Amount of Money for Paramedic Services That Must Be Raised by an Advilorium Tax Override and the Setting of the Tax Rate of Said Override."
All right, do I have a motion or, all right? Motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
That takes us on to matters, and we do have an item, number twenty, so transmittal of the five-year homelessness strategy from July 2025 to June of 2030, as requested by our city manager, Kim.
Yes, an Assistant City Manager and Economic and Development and Housing Authority Director Ursula Luna Reynosa will introduce the item.
Thank you.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. You may recall, a few months ago, we introduced a high-level summary kind of of the homelessness strategy. Susan Price, our consultant, was introduced and shared some of the background and interviews that she did on efforts that we have done in the past five years and really laid the groundwork with a SWOT analysis for the economic, I'm sorry, for the homelessness strategy that is before you tonight. It is attached as a PDF. This is the, the hard version. This is a beta copy, but we do have some in print that we will be distributing to all of you as soon as they are hot off the presses. We are excited to bring this full version to you this evening. So previously, we just shared the vision, mission, values, along with the four goals. It has now been updated with objectives and language and some background related to homelessness in Orange County. And with that, I'm going to introduce Tim Throne, who has worked tirelessly on this document to get it to the place it is this evening, to give you an executive summary of the report, and we hope that you're, as you have time, you're able to, to really read through the entire document, and we are going to be constantly working on this issue. As the document really outlines, it is a challenging issue, not for just the city of Garden Grove, but for all of the cities in Orange County, and really all the cities in, in the state and the nation. With that, Tim?
Thanks, Ursula, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is my pleasure to present the final 2025-2030 Garden Grove Homelessness Strategy. I'll go ahead and move on to the next slide. So as Ursula mentioned, we had an assessment by Susan Price. Over the past year, she has really done a comprehensive review on the CCNC's budget and policies and procedures, the city's staffing structure, and the Tri-City's collaborative MOU. And then part of the methodology of her review was to interview, do, conduct field tours, and document review to learn what Garden Grove is currently doing in our response to homelessness. These methods help Susan gather data and information about funding, existing partnerships, programs, and services offered to the unhoused and at-risk populations, and potential gaps in our systems of care. Susan developed a SWOT analysis on her findings, which now serve as the foundation for the homelessness strategy. So moving into that SWOT analysis, I'll just briefly go over this, because this was touched upon in March when we, we originally presented. So the strengths that were identified include regional collaboration efforts and partnerships, experienced service providers, multidisciplinary street outreach team, including nonprofit organizations, health and mental health providers, and the Police Department's Special Resource Team. The weaknesses that were identified include access to behavioral health services, which includes residential recovery and treatment beds for mental health and addiction. Additionally, there's silos in funding, communication, and partnership, which lead to a fragmented service response, and lack of a structured communication strategy with regional partners. The opportunities that were identified include expansion of income and employment services for CCNC residents to ensure successful exits into permanent housing, improvement on community engagement and transparency through quarterly Tri-Cities meetings, enhancing data dashboards and feedback from stakeholders, and integration with county programs and resources to increase the reach and impact of local efforts. And then lastly, we have the threats that were identified. So funding, capacity, and advocacy are all threats, which the system faces ongoing funding and capacity constraints specifically related to housing development and treatment and recovery services. Additionally, the scarcity of housing opportunities for low-income residents is a threat, so that pertains to affordable and permanent housing, permanent supportive housing developments. So next, we, in addition to the SWOT analysis, we did an analysis of the state of homelessness in Orange County, really to, to really analyze factors such as extreme housing affordability, limited behavioral health infrastructure, and jurisdictional fragmentation. A ten-year snapshot of the Orange County pit count shows a steady rise in homelessness across the board, with the exception of 2022, which were impacted by an influx of CARES Act and ARPA funds, which were one-time funding sources. So in 2024 point-in-time count, total homelessness rose to an all-time high figures. So 7,322 individuals were experiencing homelessness in Orange County in 2024 on, on a given night. This includes 4,173 individuals who are unsheltered, and then another 3,149 sheltered individuals. And then additionally, 2022, 2024 pit count data highlights that only one in 12 individuals exiting shelter were connected to a housing unit. And then additionally, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four pit count data highlights that only one in twelve individuals exiting shelter were connected to a housing unit, which is a product of the housing market and the lack of affordable and permanent supportive housing units to meet the growing need. The unsheltered population also reported strong local ties in the community with family living in in the area, and they are holding a job or going to school in the in the area. The most alarming data point is that forty-eight percent of unhoused individuals became homeless for the first time within the past year, which means economic pressures are pushing local residents into homelessness at an accelerated rate. So in addition to looking at the data in a county perspective, we also went into the regional perspective and looked at the central service planning area. So when looking at the central spa, it is important to note that the central spa is the largest and most urbanized of the three county service planning areas. Approximately three thousand four hundred and fifty-four individuals are experiencing homelessness on a given night, which represents forty percent, forty-seven percent of the county total. This is a twenty-seven percent increase from twenty twenty-two data. Unsheltered count increased by thirty-four percent while the sheltered count increased by nineteen percent. And then when looking at Garden Grove trends in a micro perspective, we were one of the only jurisdictions where the total number of unhoused decreased from twenty twenty-two with a thirty-nine percent reduction. Our figures decreased across the board, total unsheltered and sheltered counts. Garden Grove unhoused represents seven percent of the central spa total and three percent of the countywide total. Now, the Tri-Cities collaboration, which is Garden Grove, Fountain Valley and Westminster, unhoused represents nineteen percent of the central spa, which is eight, nine percent of the countywide total. Now, this last slide, it goes over, it's really just a summary of the homelessness strategy, which includes the vision, mission, goals, objectives, and key performance indicators, otherwise known as KPIs. The vision, mission, goals and objectives were presented at the last city, at the City Council meeting in March, so I won't, I won't spend too much time on that. So I'll dive right into the the KPIs, which have been established for each goal and track our performance towards achieving those goals over the five-year period. Now, goal one is to enhance communication and community engagement, and the KPIs associated to that goal is to administer a quarterly survey to partners and maintain a minimum score of eighty-five percent for communication satisfaction and track effectiveness of different communication channels, whether that's email, website, social media, to determine which channels are most effective to get the message across. Goal two is to enhance service delivery to improve response to homelessness. So maintain a client satisfaction rating of eighty-five percent for successful client exits, track number of successful housing placements and exits, and ensure that seventy percent of clients are document-ready within ninety days of entry into the CCNC. Now, goal three is to leverage partnerships, funding and resources to maximize utilization to the benefit of the clients. And the KPIs associated are to increase the number of client services facilitated via partner referrals by five percent annually and to increase grant and leverage funding by two percent annually. And then lastly, we have goal four, which is to improve quality of life for Garden Grove residents, businesses and stakeholders. And the KPIs associated are to decrease the number of public safety calls related to homelessness by five percent annually and to maintain a minimum resident and business satisfaction score of eighty-five percent. Now, that concludes my presentation, but I'm available for any questions or comments that you may have.
And quickly, I would like to, before we conclude the presentation on the homelessness strategy, I wanted to recognize Chief Alfara and the Special Resource Team for their leadership and response to homelessness and the tremendous work that the Special Resource Team has accomplished over the years. I'd highlight a few accomplishments, but there are so many others. Over this last fiscal year, the SRT team completed two hundred and sixteen encampment cleanups in collaboration with Public Works and another nine hundred and thirty-six encampment cleanups on their own. It's very significant. Through these encampment cleanups and the street outreach program, the SRT team was able to make five thousand seventy-one contacts with unhoused individuals and they referred one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight individuals to housing and/or services. These outcomes highlight the trust SRT is building with the unhoused population and our community as a whole. And I want to make sure we highlighted these efforts. There are many more. I did also want to address comments from one of tonight's public speakers, only because we are talking about homelessness. And I wanted to clarify that the SRT team was aware of that particular individual and has made contact multiple times. That individual has resisted services so far. And and sometimes, public safety is not the best representation for all folks. And so we have connected that gentleman with with Tim. They're gonna meet tomorrow and we're gonna see if there's other resources that we can bring that aren't in uniform. That might be a little bit more, that person might be more receptive to. And we'll we'll see what we can do there. They're disabled and we're gonna see what other resources we can bring to the table based on that. But I did want to make sure to clarify that SRT was very aware of this individual and services have been offered multiple times. And so that's the great thing about collaborating and working together is we look at what our our strengths are and what we can do well and what other partners can can do. And so bring that all to the table for everyone. But I did really want to thank the City Council for your leadership in this space. I think Garden Grove has demonstrated its commitment to this issue, has not shied away from it. There are more pilot programs and services that Garden Grove is offering than any other city in Orange County that I'm aware of, and it's definitely something to be very proud of. I'm not saying that we have solved it. It's a very complicated issue, but we can just continue to keep striving to make it better. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Thank you very much. It's true. It's one thing Garden Grove does extremely well, and that is to collaborate and look for innovative solutions and and trying to solve this problem, which is extremely technical, extremely difficult. One thing I wanted to mention, and then I'll obviously open it up for some comments or questions from my colleagues. We're having a little bit of a technical difficulty. The PowerPoint is not showing up on the live feed. So if for some reason that doesn't correct itself, we will make sure to have that available to the public on our website at the conclusion of the meeting this evening. Colleagues?
And real quick, Madam Mayor, if I can, I meant to, I would like to by name, recognize the SRT team.
Please.
Sergeant Jeffrey Brown is their fearless leader, and I'm gonna name all of the officers. I know they all could not be here tonight, but we really are very appreciative of all that they do. So we have Officer Jesse Luke Cotero, Officer Troy Bowman, Officer Hector Ferriera, Officer Jake Neely, Officer Levi Silva, and Officer Bryant Richards. I apologize for any names I butchered. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Obviously, we we are so grateful for all the hard work that you do day in and day out, and and it and it shows. So thank you so much. Okay, let's go down the line. I'm sure everybody has something to say here.
Yep. Honestly, you know, when you look at all the the homeless issue countywide and then you compare our successes over the last few years, it it's almost solely due to the men and women in the Garden Grove Police Department and the SRT. They're the ones that come into contact every day with these folks, try to offer them resources. But they're not the only superstars. Our city staff behind the scenes has been really, really instrumental in procuring these services. You know, we started out with just a, you know, mental ward back behind Garden Grove Hospital and we've evolved into, we have the Be Well OC and, you know, the the mobile healthcare and all this stuff that, and we do it on a budget. You know, I mean, other cities are just throwing billions of dollars at nonprofits and getting no results. We've had a thirty-nine percent reduction when all of our neighbors are going up. I mean, literally, it's unheard of. And I and I'm gonna go out on a limb here. I don't know this for a fact, but we're probably one of the best cities in the state as far as that goes. And again, largely to our staff, to our SRT unit, who kicks ass, by the way. I mean that figuratively. So, but, you know, and we we did adopt the ordinance with the no camping ordinance, but it's it's used very sparingly, probably not, hasn't even been used, might have one or two times, I don't know, but that's like the last resort we're offering. Healthcare, we have the navigation center now that we opened up with the Fountain Valley and Westminster. We've got mental health treatment, job, training. We, I mean, we've got so many carrots. And and these officers go and they they try to get these folks to come on board, but, you know, you you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. Not everybody wants to wants to do that. So anyway, I just want to give kudos to staff, SRT, but also to this body. This body started a focus plan five years ago, I think it was, and now we're refocusing once again. And I think our, you know, you're gonna see a lot more improvement. We've got a lot to do. Thirty thirty-nine percent reduction is great, but it's not a hundred percent. We still got a problem. You heard some of the comments of, you know, what we got going under under the flood control channels and this. We've got more work to do, and I think these men out here are ready to do it. So anyway, kudos to that, and go ahead and make the motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I want to say thank to the chief, Sergeant Brown. I have no idea how many times that I reached out to you because the residents have questions, concern and need somebody to be there. And of course, the SRT team. I have ride along with you guys a couple of times. Every time, you make my heart smile because the way that you you care, you you were not afraid of, you know, the challenge, the trash, the dirty stuff. You picked that up and I got to follow you and seeing that with my own eyes. And besides that, you all were very genuine to everybody around you. So every time I see you, it just make me so happy. And so I know that last time, when I went to SCAG, there was a couple of different cities that got awarded for doing the, you know, taking care of the homeless issue. We got thirty-nine percent. They couldn't have that number. And so I need pass up information back to Matt and Lisa. And hopefully, we will be able to submit our CD, you know, the Tri-City for the award, right, Matt and Lisa? Yes? So earlier, I have to do, you know, standing ovation for you guys because all the things that you did. And it's so, you know, with the staff, everybody from behind. And earlier, when Ursula were talking about that statement, I'm so glad you did that because when I heard the gentleman spoke and I was like, why couldn't we take care of that person? But when you said that, it made me feel so happy because that what our Garden Grove City is about. We care for the people and our residents. So thank you so much. Maybe one of, another day, we have time, we'll take you guys out to have a dessert again. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, and it's it's not the first time I see each and every one of your officers here, chief. So congratulations on a very well-run department and a fantastic team that we have here. I've met Sergeant Brown multiple times. I've even interviewed him on my show. Very good, very good communication skills and being able to do the outreach into the community and know that we're there for them. And there's an item that we just approved, number nine. We were getting two hundred thousand of funding from Caltrans, and that's thanks to Sergeant Brown and his team and chief, that we we got that extra funding. And and so there's a lot more that you're doing behind the scenes that a lot of people don't see. So I'm letting you know that I see you in the field. I see your encounters and your interactions with homeless people. I stop my car and watch you, and I'm very proud of the way you handle yourself, the compassion, the kindness. Some people, they they go through a lot. Homeless people, they've got mental issues, they've got all sorts of trauma. And they need that extra special care, and and I see that. I watch you guys for minutes, five, ten minutes, just taking your time, being very patiently set, sitting people down who are, they're ready to jump off the ledge, literally, and to provide service to people who are service-resistant. You guys have the toughest job in the department, I think. So thanks for coming in and making us proud. I just, everybody's watching you. And and they even compare you to other similar work in other cities. Like in Westminster, they have the Homelessly Asian Officers, the HLOs, and they're they're constantly having to study from us. And they asked me to go to their meetings and give feedbacks, and I'm learning from you guys. And these are great things we're doing, and the numbers are increasing. We have this report here that because of economics, there's more homelessness. So it just makes your job that much tougher, and it just makes us much more appreciative of what you do every day. Thank you.
And I also want to have a chance, face to face, thank you, the police department, that I have a chance to work with Sergeant Brown. And I have seen him in action, talking to the resident, which is very, very good because he explained to the people what's going on and things like that. So I want to take my chance to thank you so much. Our police department are doing great work, and our city staff is also excellent. I'm very happy with what we are doing right now, even though the homelessness is one of the general problem everywhere. And we've been improved. We've been working relentlessly, and we'll we'll work more on it, and we'll improve. Thank you so much, guy.
If I may, I'm, thank you so much for being here tonight. I have had the honor of, well, to do a ride-along and and Hester Basin Park, it has a homeless population that you, that we have. I know you guys have been out there in the community, and I was able to also witness firsthand. And I recognize that there's this culture, this Garden Grove culture, that I'm very, very proud of with the policemen, officers in our city, that I recognize that, that that genuine care. And when you approach these individuals with compassion and and even though, even though they may or may not accept the services that you, you know, we provide for them, I acknowledge the fact that you look at these individuals with that care. And I've seen it firsthand, you know, picking up after them, helping them picking up after themselves and helping, keeping them accountable for it as well. So I really do recognize that, and I and I want to thank you all for 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 having the spirit, this Garden Grove spirit that I really, really recognize. So thank you all from the bottom of my heart. Continue the great work. And and already, I've had had a few of residents that reach out regarding some of the streets in our city. You guys are quick to respond with Public Works as well, so I thank you for everything you do.
Hi, everyone, and I promise that I will eventually, there is a question here. I will eventually get to the question, part of the questioning portion, but since we're, you know, we're sharing warm and fuzzies. I do, I do want to say that I'm gonna echo the sentiments that that Yesenia just expressed, that Councilwoman Yatton expressed, that we have a very specific culture here in the City of Garden Grove, which I do believe sets us apart from a lot of the other municipalities, not just in the county of Orange, but also in the Southland in general, and I will say California. And I think it goes back to what what my colleague, Councilmember Brydigan, was discussing, is that this body and also our staff and our departments and all of our other partners have made it really their focus for a long time to really focus in on this issue. It's something that all of our leaders here are very, very passionate about, and it's proven in the fact that we've been able to reach some really amazing metrics because the numbers really do speak for themselves in terms of what we've actually been able to produce as a city in terms of reducing numbers, but also making sure that we're getting people into permanent supportive housing. Because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that folks are getting to the place where they are no longer at the risk of of having homelessness and being unhoused. And we know that being unhoused is caused by, can be caused by a variety of different factors. You know, there is, you know, there's mental health, there's substance abuse, but there's also the very real threat of the economic uncertainty that a lot of people are feeling and economic pressure. So it takes an approach that is multifaceted and involves a lot of stakeholders for the work that a city like Garden Grove has been able to accomplish. And we aren't even the largest city in the county, nor do we have the biggest coffers compared to other cities in the county. But we make it work. compared to other cities in the county, but we make it work and the way we make it work is through one, through strategy, partnerships, collaboration, communication, one hundred percent. And our, some of our biggest partners have been our Garden Grove Police Officers and our SRT team. I've also been on these ride-alongs, I've seen the amazing quality of interactions that our officers have. And I know that this is intrinsic within the leadership of our department. Chief Alfara, I mean, amazing. And even back when, you know, we had Chief DeRay and I was on his Chief Advisory Council and I saw the ethos with which he was trying to lead the department. I definitely see the threads of that going forward and in the way that Jeff, you lead this team is spectacular. I mean, the amount of contacts and the successful turn to resources that you have. Other municipalities wish that they had the success rates that you guys are able to accomplish. And I think that goes to show that like you guys really care about the quality of interactions that you guys are having with the members of the community. And you guys hold yourself to really high standards because you know that we're also holding you to really high standards. And you know that our community is watching you and, and we appreciate the work that you guys do. And I know we, we blow you up a lot on the phone, Jeff, because when we see something, we're always reporting it to you. But you guys really go above and beyond and I really want to say that I appreciate that because you guys are often the first, the first line of contact, right? And I also mentioned that we have a lot of other stakeholders. We have BLOC. We also have our street medicine program by way of the county. And this is all in these partnerships. And I'm sorry that I'm getting professorial and I'm waxing poetic, but I have an audience here and I feel like compelled to also inform the people. But it is really, really hard. I, I cannot stress this enough. It is really, really hard to get projects like these off the ground, being a city the size that we are. And it requires people to look in every single corner, under every single couch cushion for grant funding, for, for help from our partners in the county, for help from the state, for help from the federal government. Hopefully we'll be able to continue getting it. I don't know. But we have a lot of folks out there that are really invested in what we do because we're providing really great ideas to go forward. And we've had an auditor come in, a, a third-party auditor who actually used to be the head of, I believe, the Human Services Department with the county, correct me if I'm wrong, but she did an objective investigation and looked at all of the programs that we did. She gave a presentation here a few months ago, if you guys are interested in looking back. And she said that she wishes that we had the types of programs that we're running here in Garden Grove at the county level. She wishes she could execute those. That is how well we're doing in terms of the work that we have here as a city and as a collective body. So I want to double down the fact that this is, we're doing really well, but this is still a work in progress. We still have a lot to do and we have a long, long way to go. We're only going to be able to accomplish this if we have continued buy-in from our community, which our community always comes to talk to us. They're invested in making sure that we're solving this issue within our neighbors and our, in our community and improve our quality of life to take care of one another. And also within our region, we've seen buy-in from our neighbors in Westminster and Fountain Valley. And I hope that we're going to be able to see more continued buy-in, that see other cities doing what we're doing and hopefully we're going to be able to see a regional impact. And to that effect, here goes my question. Because, because I've mentioned partnerships and I see in the SWAT analysis that the biggest threats that we have at this point are funding capacity and advocacy and housing opportunities for low-income residents. So that goes into obviously our ability to have actual housing out there in the housing market and we try to address that with our housing voucher program and providing folks the ability to help pay for their, their rents and that's funded through the, through the federal government with the Department of Housing and Urban Development. But we also have a huge housing shortage. And I want to know also what other partnerships you think, Tim, that, and this is a broad question, you might not have an answer for it and it's okay because it's big up there. But what kind of partnerships do we want to see? Do we have anything in, anything conceptualized for, for furthering our partnership with some of our local municipalities? And also in, in light of some of these funding uncertainties, how do we feel about our, our ability to be able to be consistent in our ability to provide these services going forward? Sorry, but also yay.
I'm going to take the first stab and then Tim can add on if he would like to. First, I do want to highlight a little bit of the challenge related to permanent supportive housing and, and funding. Our shelter is practically at capacity. You know, on any given night, we might have a few beds available, but our goal going into this was to have a maximum stay of a hundred and eighty days. And our first person who's still there is, has exceeded the hundred and eighty days. We're not kicking anybody out because we're not going to put people onto the streets, but it's become a challenge because there are not permanent supportive housing units for these people to go to. Our shelter is not alone in this challenge, all of the major shelters. And in fact, in the report, it talks about some of the other big shelters in Orange County and how long the average stay is there. I believe it's well into like two-hundred and something days, if I recollect correctly. So that's a big challenge, finding permanent supportive housing. The funding, it's like five-hundred to six-hundred thousand dollars per door to build permanent supportive housing. Think about that number. Those are expensive projects. You need to have a large capital stack of dollars that typically come from government and often from the state of California. In the most recent budget, there was hardly any money put toward affordable housing and homelessness, not the way it has been in the past. We've been all, we were waiting for the May revise to come out to see if that was going to change, but it really hasn't. So that challenge is going to continue, it's gotten harder. So it's, it's a big, it's, it's a big challenge for everyone. I think where we think there are some opportunity to focus on partnerships is really in the mental health space. So there's more funding available through mental health and getting creative about how we tap into those dollars and use them for housing. We already are doing that a little bit through street medicine and CalOptima. If you think about it, that, that, that they're really meant to fund, you know, health services and the definition has kind of grown in a way that is helpful to us in these types of programs. But there's other mental health money and I think that we would be naive to not acknowledge that addiction is a huge problem and it's becoming an even bigger problem of this homelessness issue. And we really need the county's help and those partnerships to provide better assistance in that space of, of mental health and addiction to really try and, and move the needle. So I think those are the areas, areas we really want to focus on some partnerships.
Yeah, and I would just like to second Ursula's comments regarding behavioral health and mental health services and primarily beds related to mental health and disabled individuals who are unhoused, right? There's a lack of behavioral health and recuperative care beds for individuals experiencing homelessness. So that's definitely a gap in the entire county systems. And then also, what we've been really focusing on recently, as Ursula mentioned, there's, we're at the point with a lot of these clients where they've, they're at a hundred and twenty days or surpassed that. So really it's focusing and honing in on employment and income. And we've actually recently established communication with the county's OC Workforce Solutions Mobile Unit, which we're trying to get them onsite at the CCNC once a month and that's a partnership that we're looking forward to in, in the coming months. So hopefully we can bring good news once we establish an MOU with the county. But they are providing a, a presentation and we're trying to get some buy-in from the residents of the CCNC to participate in those programs, which will increase their income and employability, which hopefully will get them into, exiting into permanent, permanent housing. And then additionally, it continue rental assistance because that's the bridge to get them into rental, to a rental unit and hopefully after the program, maintain that rental unit. So we will continue to fund tenant-based rental assistance into next year in hopes that that can be a bridge into permanent housing and then eventually those individuals can increase their income and employment to where they can maintain that unit. Of course, all of us know that, you know, rental prices in, in Orange County are astronomical at this point, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to try to get their employment and income to the level to, to sustain that unit. But those are the hurdles we're kind of challenged, we're challenged with at the moment. But employment and income are the main, the main hurdle.
Thank you, guys.
Of course.
Thank you so much. This was such a valuable presentation. I hope that the community will take a look at this homeless strategy plan. I think it will answer a lot of questions. We have such an educated staff. Mr. Throne, you are, you live and breathe this. You have such a knowledge base and your passion for this really shows. So thank you to all of you for the dedication and the hard work you put into this. We are very fortunate to our SRT chief, Sergeant Brown and the entire team. We definitely see as well, just that energy, the dedication, the passion, the smiles that are still on your face after knowing just what you're seeing and you're dealing with. To the partnerships that we have, the collaborations, bringing public works into some of these cleanups and these efforts and joining together to work as a team. We do that really well in the city of Garden Grove. We work as a team and I'm extremely proud of that. So thank you again. And City Manager, Kim, I think you had some comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I too want to share some warm and fuzzy. So thank you to Ursula and her team, Monica, Tim, and Dana and Christie and Elena, they do an extraordinary job in administering your homeless strategy. Something that wasn't mentioned is they also oversee a homeless prevention program. So in line with preventing individuals from being unhoused, they have a multitude of nonprofits that they work hand in hand to ensure that if there needs some resources for utilities, food, groceries, or even just rent, they work closely with our nonprofit partners. To Chief Alfara and our SRT, you know, enough been said, but we extraordinarily have one of the best, the best in Orange County in really providing public safety to our Garden Grove community and to, it's just an extraordinary group of men and women in our police department. And I know the mayor touched upon that, but Bill Murray and his Streets Division, they work hand in hand when we're clearing the flood channels or removing some debris from various encampment sites. You know, if you would just indulge me for just a moment, I just wanted to acknowledge Raul and the Street Section. So I have a group of guys that I wanted to acknowledge as well. We have Brent, Edgar, Mike, Joe, Jorge, Aiden, Albert, and Jose. So, you know, it takes a dream team to really tackle this really difficult regional issue and we have it on hand. So I'm extremely proud of our team and also my thanks to the council. You know, when you adopted the budget last, a couple, at our last meeting, there are obviously programs that deliver the resources to our unhoused population, whether it's managing our navigation center, partnering with Be Well, collaborating with Healthcare in Action that rolls out our street medicine program. Our next opportunity will be in Councilmember Brightigan's district, in District One, which is our Street Medicine Support Center Phase Two, which will deliver forty-eight units of permanent supportive housing and, and, and resources to our unhoused population. So it will continue to deliver housing for our, for this challenging issue. So I'm excited to continue to share updates with the council in the coming months. So again, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, with that, we can go around the horn. We will start in District Six.
Oh, boy. Sorry, guys. I once again apologize. I will be waxing poetic, but I promise I will get through logistics first. Thank you guys so much for being here. So first, first and foremost, I would like to announce some wonderful upcoming events. Something really exciting is happening this upcoming week and that is that we're going to finally have the Woodbury Park groundbreaking ceremony. Now, if you're familiar with the, the several years ordeal that we've been going, well, it's not an ordeal, it's been a beautiful journey, but this is a project that started ever since my, my predecessor, Kim Wynn-Penialosa, was here on council and with the help of our amazing team and folks, and, and a lot of folks, we were able to get a funding to do a full renovation of Woodbury Park, which is the only park that we have in District Six. So I'm very, very excited and we're fi, I mean, we're very, very excited to finally, finally do this groundbreaking. When I was a member of the Parks Recreation and Arts Commission, I got to see this project come together from the ground up as we saw renderings and got all the reports from our community services team and saw all the different versions and updates of what this park was going to look like. And a few meetings ago, we finally, we finally got a contract through with a developer that's going to break ground. So I want to let all of our residents in District Six and also our neighbors in District Five, because it's really close to you guys as well, that our groundbreaking ceremony is going to be next Tuesday, July first, at 5:00 PM at Woodbury Park. And this is a free community event and we're going to be giving you guys updates about all of the wonderful things that are be, going to be coming to the park, letting you guys know about like how that construction stuff is going to go. And I'm just, I'm so excited to finally, to finally see this hit the ground running because this project has been a long time coming and I'm just so incredibly proud of everyone that's had something to do with this. Again, all of our teams have just really knocked it out of the park and so I cannot wait to see you guys over there and have something good to, good, good and to celebrate and look forward to. I also want to let you guys know that, let's see, we had the Beautify Buena Clinton 2.0 event this last weekend and this was a much more pared-down version of our first iteration of Beautify Buena Clinton. As you remember, we got rained on and we were not able to do one of the things that we wanted to do, which was paint and spruce up some of the landscaping in the area and also get rid of some of the graffiti that was there. So I want to really thank our Head of Code Enforcement, David Dent, and the entire department, as well as Noel from Buena Clinton Family Resource Center for helping us set up shop there and offer us our coordinating point, as well as the members of our Garden Grove Police Department and members of the Living Spring Church for coming and volunteering with us and going out there and helping us paint up the walls, trim the hedges. And you guys are probably going to see this on my social media sometime soon, but they let me use a power washer to actually like go and, and clean out some of the graffiti. It was really cool. So be on the lookout for that. That was a lot of fun. I'm, I'm really glad that we are committed to improving parts of our community. I know that Buena Clinton was the first part of this project, but we know that other communities are going to be getting the similar treatment too. So I look forward to all of the beautification projects that are going to be happening in the other districts. Happy to, to join in and help you guys with some elbow grease. We had a lot of fun at Beautify Buena Clinton and hopefully it doesn't rain on yours because, yeah, it was cold. It was cold. But we got out, we all got it done and then that's what, that's what matters. Also be on the lookout for an update with regards to the improvements at Sabroso. As you know, they've been going through a huge expansion. I want to thank Sam and, and the entire family over there. They gave me a little behind-the-scenes tour of the renovations so far and I got to tell you that everything is looking really, really cool. And I was told that there were going to be mariachis there at some point and, don't let me near the mic, that's all I got to say. Be on the lookout for that within the coming weeks. They're going to be opening up and once we get a firm date, I will make sure to let all of you guys know. I, I love Sabroso, it's a special place in my heart there in District Six and I know that it's, it's a place of pride for many of us here in Garden Grove. I also want to thank the folks at the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce for hosting me at their Government Affairs Meeting. I had the opportunity to address them, let them know about the upcoming projects that we have in District Six and in the city as a whole. Thank you so much to Claudette and everyone there. It was a really great time. They were very welcoming. I also want to thank Mary Ann Supnet from our County Workforce Department for coming and addressing some of the questions that our business owners had. Right now, a lot of our business owners have some questions with regards to, you know, the current events that have been happening and the ICE raids and folks have been having uncertainty with regards to employment and people have questions. So I hope that by connecting folks with resources, we're going to be able to also provide our business owners with a little bit more of a sense of security in terms of workforce solutions, knowing what their rights are and in general, being able to make sure that they are informed and able to continue their course of business. So I'm really glad that she was able to join us at the Chamber of Commerce so that we could connect with the business owners. Okay, now I do want to make sure that I keep the issue of the current ICE raids front and center in our conversations. I mean, we've been talking about this for the last several meetings because it's an issue that is of pressing concern for us here in the city of Garden Grove. We've been talking about it a lot. We've been sharing the information on social media. We've been reaching out to our residents, talking to our business owners, trying to address as many of their questions as possible. There were events locally such as the No Kings Rally, which took place in Anaheim. I was able to attend that rally and I was able, I can proudly say that it was a very peaceful demonstration where folks were able to share their, their, you know, First Amendment right to speech and they did so really beautifully in a wonderful demonstration. But, you know, being able to go out and even, you know, hold a poster in a public space can often, you know, be, be a privilege. Not everyone has the ability to take time to go out into the streets or nor do they feel safe enough to do so. So, I want to make sure that I'm also sharing ways with people that if they're feeling like they want to do something, that they can do something. So, there's obviously helping out organizations that are currently actively doing the work. There's Orange County Rapid Response Network, which is a wonderful network of organizations that is currently keeping track of sightings and connecting families with resources. I encourage folks to visit their website, which is ocrapidresponse.org. They have resources there like a family preparedness plan and information on what you should do within the first 24 hours if a loved one is taken. It's very important to make sure that you are as prepared as possible in case you are taken, someone on your family is taken. I cannot, I cannot stress this enough that you need to have things like your birth certificates ready, your, you need to have passports ready, there's specific documents that you need in terms of childcare and things like that. And looking at that family preparedness plan can be very helpful for you. They also have information on community trainings and connections to legal resources there. So, OC Rapid Response is at the frontline of that work here in Orange County, but there's other organizations like the ACLU, Catholic Charities, that are also doing that work and you can support them if you can do that financially, that is amazing. The, some other things that you can do are, of course, if you are able to attend a training with them and help report sightings, you can call in the OC Rapid Response Hotline, that's 714-881-1558. Again, that's 714-881-1558. They can also connect you with resources there. You can also attend their specific trainings where they can give you advice with regards to how to watch out for your community. Some, I'm sorry, guys, but it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of information, but you are also able to volunteer with a lot of organizations. Right now, there is a lot of need for translators and you can volunteer to translate through the National Immigration Immigrant Justice Network. They can connect you with ways that you can provide your, your linguistic services. And if you're an attorney, you can provide your legal services through immigrationjustice.us. You can also advocate. I cannot, you know, I cannot stress this enough, you know, we, we do it on our social media, we do it when we give our comments here at the end, but you are also, I want to make sure that our residents feel empowered to, to advocate as well because, you know, we're a city and there's limitations to what our jurisdiction is. You know, we're here talking about potholes and contracts, about asphalt and things like that, but there's definitely members in government outside of us here at the municipal level who definitely have a bigger say and a more effective vote in how, how things shake out. So, I encourage you to go out and talk to your representatives. You know, here in Garden Grove, we're represented by Congressman Derek Tran. You can contact him at tran.house.gov or you could reach his office at 714-960-6483. Again, that's 714-960-6483. We can also try and get in contact with some of our other local leaders. There's a lot of folks that have been trying to do work to make sure that folks are getting the help that, that they need in other ways as well, because we are having issues with food insecurity. You know, folks are getting really worried about how they're going to, how they're going to make rent and there's folks out there that can definitely help us out with that. Other ways you can advocate is just continuing to share information from reputable sources and I cannot stress this enough. It is so important that when we're sharing information, we're sharing information that is as accurate and as verified as possible. If it is an official organization that we know is doing the work, they're a very, very reliable source, please be mindful of sharing that information. And another thing that I want to say is, oh, sorry, guys, it is a lot of talking. Is that I want to make sure that everyone out there is, is really careful when we're out there and we're seeing activity. If you're out there reporting activity, do so from a reasonable distance, you know, try, try to take as much care of yourself as possible and try not to get into a really dangerous situation because it, it, it's, it's, it is scary out there. But one of the ways that you can empower yourself is also by knowing your rights and you can visit ilrc.org and have the Know Your Rights cards that you can download there. Now, I mentioned food insecurity earlier and we have been facing that issue here in central Orange County. I want to make sure that I encourage folks to contribute to as many food drives or volunteer at the food bank if they can. Right now, we have Santiago High School's Athletic Department, which is doing a food drive, food and supply drive, so non-perishable food items as well as hygienic supplies that they're going to be collecting. The information is up on my social media. If you're a Garden Grove resident, you need help transporting any of that stuff, I'm, I'm happy to go and pick it up myself. I'm ready to go and drive. This is going to be affecting, this is going to be supporting our local community here, especially in District Six. Los Amigos High School also is doing a drive. I've also shared that information on my social media and I encourage you to donate there as well. We're going to do our best to get as many resources out there from the community as possible. And the most simple and basic thing that, that we can do really is just to look out for one another. I mentioned this at our last City Council meeting. We have a duty as neighbors to take care of one another and to do our best and I encourage you to reach out to your neighbors, see how they're doing, offer to go pick up groceries for them, to give them rides. You know, I'm not letting my mom go out on her own, so I, I'm driving her to every doctor's appointment. I'm picking up the groceries for her. We are being very, very careful. I would, I would be naive if I didn't, and I, and I would be doing a disservice to my community also if I didn't acknowledge that this is something that affects me personally as well, that this is a fear that I live with every day too. And we're dealing with it as a family and I want to make sure that the same way that I'm trying to be as careful as possible, I'm letting you guys know that you should be as careful as possible too. And so, take care of one another and be kind to one another because right now is really when we need to show each other that we love one another the most. I want to continue, I'll continue by acknowledging some organizations here in our local community that are also doing really great work, such as Viet Rise and Viet Rock. Our speaker mentioned the canvassing here in Little Saigon and that's an effort that's been, that, that I know is going on and I, and I hope that we continue doing that kind of work to reach out to our neighbors and we'll continue reaching out to our commu, our businesses because it's information that they really need to have. So, I want to make sure that they're also getting their flowers because they're doing work in an area that really needs that type of outreach. I also want to make sure that I, I give a few other thank yous because we've been in constant conversation over the last few weeks and I want to make sure that I, that, you know, I want to thank my colleague, Yesenia Munyaton. I want to thank her husband, Walter Munyaton, because they've been great supports to me personally and also they've been doing a lot of great work within the community, Walter especially through the school district. And, you know, that hotline that just was released through GGUSD is going to be very impactful, so I really encourage our Garden Grove families that if they need help to reach out to that hotline because we've been trying to connect them to as many resources as well. We've been trying to make sure that our district friends know that there are groups, organizations, individuals that they can also reach out to so that they have help. The Family Help Line, by the way, is 714-663-6257. Again, it's 714-663-6257. And look, guys, I'll, I'll continue giving thanks. Thank you to Congressman Lou Correa for, for helping us get some Know Your Rights trainings out to our local community, as well as Senator Tom Umberg for helping, and as well as Congressman Correa for helping make their caseworkers accessible to, to our residents when they need help with issues. We, it's, I'm, I'm, this is all grassroots. We're all trying our best to help one another out. I, I cannot stress enough that this, this is rough and I know that we're all just going to be able to, to make this through together. And, and I hope that I'm going to continue to having the support of my colleagues like Yesenia, like my colleague Philip, who's also been very supportive and, you know, we just, that, that we just continue getting through this. And I am a resource out there to our community. You know where to find me, you know how to reach out to me. You can reach out to me on my socia as well, @VoteAristegui and I believe my email is available on our city website as well, if you would like to get in touch. But within, within what we can do as members of this community and also as elected members of, of this body within our limited jurisdiction, you know, we're, we're going to try our best. So, we're just going to keep on going. Yesenia, I throw the ball to you because you probably have better, nicer, more eloquent words to say.
Thank you very much, Ariana. And thank you so much for all those words and acknowledgements as well. Behind the scenes, we're trying our very best to serve our community, the community we represent. It's in our diverse community that, that we, that we represent. Every single one of our residents is valid. Every single one of our residents deserves to live in peace and, and, and have prosperity in our, in our community. So, we're going to continue to represent in, in that way however we can in our social media and out in, in the street where, where we can connect with those individuals. And, you know, City Council members, if we can, you know, if it also is in your heart to represent our diverse community, if we can work together to, to, to address this issue, more than open to having that conversation. Ariana is more than work, open to having that conversation. Stephanie Campesine, thank you so much for checking in with me a few weeks ago. I really do appreciate that as well. So, let's just have that open communication and representation for our community because they deserve to. And moving on. So, good evening, everyone. Recently, I had the chance to attend the OCFA Water Safety Event at Station 82 in Garden Grove with my kids. All the children in attendance were able to receive a pledge certificate to be water sa, safe this summer. Additionally, the visitors were treated with cold pops and had a great time meeting and hanging out with the firefighters. It was nice to see them interact with the firemen and ask questions that were very insightful. It was a fun and educational event that helped families learn to stay safe, to stay safe around the water. So, thank you so much to OCFA for putting our community's safety first. This past weekend, I joined Arlo's Trash Force at Hester Basin Park for a community cleanup event, bringing along, along five dedicated volunteers to help make a difference. It was a powerful reminder that what we can accomplish, of what we can accomplish when we come together for a shared purpose. A heartfelt thank you to Arlo and his family for organizing this impactful event and inspiring all of us to take better care of our parks and our environments. I also want to inform that, that Arlo took first place in the State Civic B Competition. So, he will be representing the State of California National B in DC this November. So, kudos to him for making Garden Grove shine bright. I'm very, very proud of him. I want to give a thank you to Chief Alfara and, and John as well for taking the time to meet me and Eddie from the Northeast Garden Grove Little League to address important safety concerns that arise, that were arise by players and their families. It was a thoughtful and productive conversation that focused on creating a safer environment for our youth. I look forward in building a strong partnership moving forward. I also had the incredible opportunity to participate in a ride along with the OCFA Station 86. And I witnessed firsthand the dedication, the skill, and the compassion our firefighters bring to every call. It was a powerful experience that deepened my appreciation for the critical work that they do in our community to keep them safe. Thank you to the crew in Station 60, 86 for welcoming me and allowing me to learn more about the challenging and responsibilities that they face each day. I also want to ta, take a moment to thank our incredible staff and the Chamber of Commerce for putting together such a fun and engagement, engaging state of the, state of the district event. It was my very first one and I truly enjoyed the experience. So, kudos to all the organizers. Thank you so much. Also, I want to invite folks to an event happening this Saturday, June 28th at the Santiago High School. The Athletics Department will be having a food drive between 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM to drop off non-perishable food items and hygiene items. Other essential items will help support our families and our community. Pickup time for the care pack, packages is from 2:00 to 4:00 for the families who are in need. I'd like to invite our council colleagues, mayor, city manager to step by, to stop by if you are free and drop off some items as well. These items would go directly to Garden Grove residents who are living in fear right now due to the ice raids. And then I also want to give kudos to the Garden Grove Unified School District for stepping up to the plate and, and supporting our families in Garden Grove. And they do have a family help line. Once more, I will share the contact information. It is 714-663-6257. So, thank you so much for stepping up for our community and being a resource for our community as well in this very needed time. Lastly, I want to give a special shout out to my husband, Walter, as we celebrate our 11th year anniversary. You have been my biggest supporter and partner in all things. With my birthday just a few days away and yours right around the corner, there's so much to celebrate in the Munyaton household this month. Grateful for the love, the laughter, and the memories we've built, including our shared love for our community.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Last few meetings, I, I yielded my time, so this meeting, I'm going to reclaim a little bit of that time, but it won't be too long. Don't worry. I want to mention that we had motioned and voted on a slew of agenda items. I didn't pull item number three, but I think it's important enough to mention that in Garden Grove, we do have a proclamation for Juneteenth. I'm going to read it into the record. Garden Grove's proclamation, June 19th as Juneteenth. Whereas, as stated within the preamble of the United States Declaration of Independence, we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation- And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in the Confederate territories free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment that formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, word about the Emancipation Proclamation reached authorities and African-Americans in the South and Southwestern United States on June 19th, 1865. And whereas, in 1996, the first legislation to recognize Juneteenth Independence Day was introduced in the U.S. House of Representatives under HJ Resolution 195. And whereas, in 1997, Congress recognized the day through Senate Joint Resolution 11 and House Joint Resolution 56. Whereas, the day has been recently established as a federal holiday after President Joe Biden signed legislation in June 2021, establishing Juneteenth as a national holiday. And whereas, June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words "June" and "19th", and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. Now therefore, the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth, and the Garden Grove to acknowledge and recognize the past struggles to end slavery in the United States in order to form a more perfect union. I know it's June 24th, but it's not too late. And I've instructed my staff to present this proclamation in a more timely manner next year. It will come before the 19th. And I think it's important that we celebrate all of our communities. Our diversity is our strength. We have a lot to celebrate tonight. We've mentioned a lot of accomplishments. I'm in my third year, and I'm on my way out, my fourth year. We have our new colleagues coming in, so I yield my time so our most recent electives can have a little bit more time to be able to present many different aspects of their activities in and around Garden Grove. And I'm very, very thankful, even though the meeting's a little bit longer. I should take Viverin to stay a little bit more alert. But it's so important what we have to present, and so we have to use our time wisely to get a lot of the information out. I also want to remind people that we, as Vietnamese-Americans, also celebrate June 19th. It's the Republic of South Vietnam Armed Forces Day. We will not forget our veterans and those who have sacrificed for the cause of freedom and democracy in Vietnam. And every time I see the yellow flag with three red stripes, I thank our veterans. I thank all the people who have fought and sacrificed, and many of them are still here with us. Their numbers are dwindling. I've sent out recognitions to some of our veterans and activists who have preserved our flag with the three red stripes, which flies proudly in and around Garden Grove also. We also have a little Saigon here in Garden Grove, which we're very proud of. We have funding to diversify and grow and put little Saigon on the map in Garden Grove. And so we don't forget that Juneteenth is a day that we all need to celebrate, regardless of what our heritage is. Especially as African-Americans here in our community, celebrate Juneteenth. We, the Vietnamese-Americans, also celebrate the 19th of June. It's a coincidence. It wasn't planned. But that's how I want to remember it. Last couple of weeks, we went to an event where we also celebrated our graduates, a lot of our college graduates. I believe all our council members, mayors there. Very proud of our graduates. I think some are older, what, 70-something, 80-year-olds? It was amazing that we were handing out celebratory diplomas to as young as, what, maybe in their teen years? And as old as in their 70s. And all different degrees, all different fields, all different backgrounds. We have so much to celebrate in Garden Grove. So that was one of our prouder moments. And tonight, we celebrated the Garden Grove Gems. Everyone, even those who didn't show up, had participated, their heart and soul was in it. One year, I had the home beautification. I had the Home Pride. I took home that award, and there was a certificate on my refrigerator for the longest time. So we were proud of that program. It's been resurrected as the Garden Grove Gems. It used to be Home Pride. Regardless, I congratulate all of the Hall of Famers. It's amazing, three-peat. How do they do that, right? So that's a huge contribution to the Plan, Build, and Beautify program that we have here in Garden Grove. And last, I want to mention our State of the City at Hyatt Regency. It was packed full. Thank you to all the sponsors, the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce who organized it. All our sponsors, they all came. They all had tables. I have to say that the best speech I ever heard from a mayor was Stephanie Klaufenstein. It was heartfelt, very moving. Kbar, the legend. It was amazing to see, we've come full circle. We've grown and matured as a city. We have her as one of our first leaders, mayors. And then now we have another woman as mayor. And I really, it was a moment to really, really savor. And Steve Jones was there, former mayor, and another day in paradise for him. The clips that the GGTV3 put together, I'm so thankful for that. It has reflected to each of our districts and our council member from each district and our mayor. I think it was also one of the shortest speeches from a mayor. It was short. It wasn't long at all. Maybe that's why I liked it so much. And it was so memorable. I had to stand up and clap for it because, thank you, Stephanie. You really represent us well. I wish I was giving the speech. But no, I was there to witness it all and soak in everything that we've accomplished over the years. And so proud to be on the council with you guys. I want to mention one serious note that I've witnessed recently, which is some speeding and reckless driving in and around Garden Grove highways and byways. And I've alerted a former and retired police officer, George Bridgum, who brings in a lot of expertise in this area. So everything that's related to policing, I call up George because I can always have good second opinions from him. And I've witnessed it. I've seen it on the streets. And I'm warning those who think they can get away with racing on our street, don't do it. If you think you can speed on our streets, if you think you can drive recklessly on our streets, I have alerted our police chief. We will catch you, we will cite you, we will prosecute you. I'm making that message loud and clear. Don't race in and around Garden Grove. Don't speed in and around our highways. We will get California Highway Patrol, CHP, involved. We will put an end to that. I don't want anybody hurt. Speed kills. So stop it, whoever's out there. And I've seen it almost on a weekly basis, reckless driving, speeding, and racing, and drifting, and all sorts of very illegal and dangerous driving on our streets. Our chief knows about this, and he's going to be very vigilant. So don't do it. Don't do it. Anybody who's doing that out there, you're going to get caught, and you're going to get prosecuted. I don't want anybody to get hurt. So be really careful when you're out there and you see a speeder. Pull over. Just avoid them. They can be drunk. They can be driving while intoxicated. They can be having mental issues or relapses, or you don't want to take any chance with them. So I'm telling our public, be aware, be careful, and call our police when you see any of those incidences. Lastly, I just want to celebrate the Fourth of July. Happy Fourth of July to everybody. Safe and sane. Do not set off illegal fireworks. You will be caught, and you will be fined. I don't want any fires in and around Garden Grove during the holidays. It's more work for our fire department, OCFD, who, as you've heard tonight, have a lot on their plate just trying to save lives. So we don't need more problems. Illegal fireworks is a problem. I've seen it in and around my own home and neighborhood. Don't light up those illegal fireworks. Don't cause more incidents that's going to tax our fire department and our police, who's already stretched thin. They're working very hard. You saw the SRT team tonight, and I said, I see them in the field. They don't see me. They don't necessarily see everybody who sees them, but their job's very visible. And I'm very proud of them. I've seen the compassion. I've seen the care. These are not just officers. They are gentlemen. They're doing us a great service by taking care of some of our most vulnerable population. We can't support them enough. So with that, I'm going to reclaim all my time already, I think. I've used up four meetings' worth of messaging. Thank you for indulging me the time, Mayor and Councils.
Yes, Mayor. So a couple items. First, concert in the park. I got to enjoy it last week, and it was so much fun. So for the resident out there, if you want to come and have a relaxing time, please come to our next event, which is June 26th, the Wise Art. The one that's very popular is the Taylor Switch. Last year, when I was there, the kid went crazy. So make sure you bring your niece, your nephew, your grandkid, whatever. But I already told my friends, the choir, and my niece and nephews to be there. So come and join us, and you're going to enjoy. Second is the State of City Councilmember Chodovin already said a lot, so I'm not going to repeat some of that. The only one thing I want to say is I want to say thank to the Chamber of Commerce, also our staff too, especially for GGTV3. If you pay attention, the council only have like a minute or so, but they were able to capture everything, our goal, you know, what we want to do, and the activity that we have. Great job, a lot of work that put in. I know that for many days, closer to the day, they were working so hard on it. They were sweating whenever I saw them. So thank you. Today, we got to see the chairman. I know that I mentioned to our staff, when I first became a councilmember, I would like to see similar event for the holiday, where we want to see the house with the most decorate for the holiday, you know, during Christmas time. So this is my third year. I know that this did not happen for the last two years, and I understand our staff really busy, have so many on their calendar already. But this year, if our staff cannot do it, I would love to do it, and I would fund it myself or find sponsor for it. Just so that for residents out there, get ready, decorate your house, and just make our Garden Grove is the best with the decorated for the holiday. So earlier, when Chief Kobe were talking about the prevention for the drowning, just remind me of the time that I did the ride-along with them, just like what you did. And during that time, you know, I got to see them doing the work with saving lives. And so every time now that I see the OCFA, you know, the firefighter, I always think of them that way, where that when you sick, you call 911, and that they are the one that came to help you. So just want to say thank you, and that's during that time, just so, you know, the compassion and to make the people feel better when they need your help. Just amazing. I know it's hard for me to say that, but you have to experience that to see the hurt, the care that our staff has. Next, there are a couple events that are coming up that I want to bring up here. The first one, the Home Buyer Event. It's going to be on June 28th, 10:30 to 12:30 at the Vietnamese Library on the address 10872 Westminster Street. Number 214 and 215 is open for the public. The second event is by the Women Club at the corner of Chapman and Gilbert there, the same day. And that's going to be a dinner and dance. They still have ticket. That one's going to be a three-course meal with game, dancing, and music. So please contact them at seven one four eight four six seven five three three if you would like to get a ticket. Earlier, we have many of the items that we vote for, the consent items, and I did not pull any of them, but I want to mention three of them. The first one is number four. This is related to the request from Great World Block for our city support. I know that I mentioned this before, but I just want to let the resident out there knowing that our staff put in a lot of effort, especially Yisela and your team. So it's brought back the memory when we have to fly, you know, within the same day, went there to see, you know, what the Great World Block in the future would be like. During the rain, you were driving us. We were so scared to that just because we couldn't see anything. And that day, for councilmember John O'Neill, even though he was busy, he still tried his best to come there really late. But that just so everybody out there is the how hard our staff and our council here work for our city. There were residents asking me, do you guys get paid for that? No, we do that because we care. And that when we make a decision, we want to make a right decision. And so we have to spend our own time. For me, I have to take a day off from work to go and do that. For some of the councilmembers, similar thing, or in that case, councilmember John O'Neill, he was busy, but he still took all the effort to go there during the rain and everything. So thanks, Yisela. Not just that, I learned that during that time, they presented something, and they asked for this support. And then a couple months later, come back, they ask for more. But our staff was like, no, you showed us this, and this is what we agreed to. That's so me, that you work hard, and you care, and you take your responsibility very seriously. So thank you for doing that. I know it's hard sometimes when you don't see it, and people out there just see you doing your work, but it takes a lot of bravery and courage to make sure that you do the right thing. So thank you. That is number four. Number seven, about the Community Veteran Hospital for Emergency. This is for the resident out there that want to care for the animal. So our city have to spend extra money. So whenever there is an animal emergency, they would be able to go there and get the service. So I know that we talk about different fund, different thing, and, you know, the thing that we care, but this for the people that are animal lover, this is something that we make a decision to support that. Number eight was about the KNG Industrial Demo Listen True Building. I did ask staff for detailed information, you know, why we select this company to do the work. And I just want to say thank to our staff. Very short time, just yesterday and today, they were able to provide me the full report of everything, from the day one, you know, a couple months back, and every detail, every single day, what happened, and how much it cost, and the time to take. That if we didn't do that, it's going to take us 16 weeks or so just to find a, like, just have a beat out there and get somebody to be selected for that. So thank you for doing your diligent work and know the detail and be able to provide the detail. That, and then I know that we talked a little bit about the Juneteenth. So for us, you know, we work for federal, and we celebrate. That's a thank to councilmember Chodovin for bringing that up. Sometimes people will ask me, like, what is it about? So one simple thing, it's just that, you know, the passing of abolishment of slavery in the U.S. But also, council, Chodovin mentioned about the June 19th as the Vietnamese Federation, yeah, and for days. So I just want to take the opportunity, because a lot of time, we try not So I just want to take the opportunity, because a lot of time we try not to be biased or anything. So I normally try not to do that. And so in this case, I just want to say thank to all the uncle and aunt who came before us and were able to sacrifice, you know, this is to fight for freedom. And so I just want to take this opportunity to recognize that. Last but not least, this is a fun one. So I said it with our city manager. Couple days ago, I was driving on Beach Boulevard, coming home from the beach, Huntington Beach. I was so surprised. The whole time from the beach all the way to freeway 22, I did not have to stop at a red light. And I was driving 35 to 36 mile per hour. That's like not me normally, but I was surprised. And I feel amazing because when I feel that, I was like, wait a minute, why can't we do that in our city? And so I brought the information back to our city manager. We, our council here, did vote for a couple of signal study, right? Where is that? What happened? I don't see. Yeah, we didn't, but, okay, so last time I asked about the one for broadcast. I was told that we had that. But if you look, every time you go on broadcast, there's always stuck, you know, traffic there. So I asked Lisa, please check back and let me know what happened with that study. Why don't we, I mean, I don't see the result from it. So I think if we could do that and our resident try on the street and doesn't have, you know, they don't have to stop at any traffic light, just ride, driving at the speed limit, I think people are going to be really appreciate that. They're going to feel amazing to live in Garden Grove City. That's it for me. Thank you.
That's a problem with the last one of my main event and wider point. My colleagues have talked over me already, so I'm not going to repeat it. Just remind people that even though with all the events going on, we still live in a great country. We live in an awesome Garden Grove City with a good mayor, good leader. So take care of yourself and take care of each other.
Thank you. Yeah, it's weird that you're saying that because I had the exact opposite experience going down Beach Boulevard from Huntington Beach Ford, and I stopped at every light and I'm going, why can't they do like Garden Grove did and sync the lights? So we did do the syncing operation on a few streets. I think Brookhurst was the last one that we just, so I don't know if they finished that or not. But even then, the freeways and everything kind of gets, it's not foolproof, so. But anyway, with that being said, I was going to pull number five, the PFAS thing, but I decided not to, you know, just a brief history. I wanted the community to understand. When I first was elected to the council, was one of the things I campaigned on. And I knew it was going to be a very difficult thing because of the expense. It's just really expensive. But I thought we needed the safety in our community and with our water. Our previous city manager, I met with him and Bill, and Bill Murray. Bill knew what PFAS was. He was already an expert in it. Our previous city manager, like, what's PFAS? What's, you know? And once he understood what it was, then he was like all on board. And I just want to give a shout out to all of city staff that was involved in making the PFAS filters happen. You know, it was a significant expense. It took a lot of partnerships and a lot of work behind the scenes to make it happen. We became the first city in Orange County with active PFAS filtering. And, you know, that's a kudo for us. And quite frankly, there's, most of cities still don't have it, right? And so our water is probably the safest water you're going to get in Orange County. So, you know, just hats off to staff current and past for making that happen. And I was going to pull it, but I decided I'll, you know, maybe I'll discuss. I'll do like Cindy did and talk about it after the fact. So state of the city, I concur with Councilman Joe Dovin. The mayor did the best speech ever, very heartfelt, very poignant, just really showed her pride in our city and what's coming. You know, they did show a kind of a rah-rah video right prior to that and just highlighting all the things that are on the horizon for our city. And I really, really thought that was a good event. Stephanie, awesome job. I almost ran up there with a tissue.
I know.
But we know, we all knew you meant it. You know, that was great. And so I would recommend the community next year to attend. You know, the tickets are fairly reasonable and, you know, the chamber puts that on and organizes it. And I think our city staff kind of was all hands on deck too to make it go. But it was a really good event and it really highlights the city and it educates the community as to what's going on. I'm going to, I just got the links for some of those videos, so I'll be posting them on my social media, probably tonight or tomorrow. And I'm sure, I think we all just got the links today before the meeting. So we'll put some of those out and hopefully the folks can watch them and see what's going on. Fourth of July coming up. We won't meet before that's over with. I do want to give a shout out. I know our PD is going to be inundated. Our OCFA is going to be real busy, especially on Fourth of July. But, you know, remember, folks, those mortar fireworks that shoot into the air are illegal, okay? Just because you can go buy the little safe and sane cones and this and that doesn't mean you can light off those big mortars. And there's just so many issues with that and they'll be out looking in full force. But on top of that was our water balloon issue. Last year, PD went out in full force and they're going to do it again this year. If you want to throw water balloons at your friends and you guys are all going, great, have fun. But don't attack people who are just walking by. Don't attack people who are driving by. Don't freeze those water balloons and then throw them at your neighbors and unsuspecting people. Two years ago, we had an elderly man knocked off his bicycle with water balloons. He was sent to the hospital, was there for three months, okay? That's an assault. And you don't attack people who don't want to be, have water balloons, especially when they're old. I mean, you know, eighty-seven years old and you're throwing it on his bike and you're throwing water balloons at him. That's crazy, okay? Have a little respect. So if you want to have fun with your friends, go, by all means, do that. Stay in the yard, throw water balloons at each other, kids have a blast. But don't throw them at people who haven't asked to have that happen to them, all right? Garden Grove Gems tonight was awesome again. I want to thank staff for that. They did another great job. The coveted gnome. Some of those people, you know, I get a call and I brought it up a few times in there. I get a call every year after that and people go, where can I buy one of those gnomes? You can't buy them. You have to win them, all right? They are not for sale. I can't even get one. And Stephanie wants one, but she can't get one unless she wins it. You cannot, you cannot, they cannot. You have to win it. You have to earn it. So I know a lot of people want those things and it's kind of cool. So very good job with staff for that. I know years ago when it was Garden Grove Pride, I used to have to drive around and look at all the houses in the community. And they gave you a $5 gift card to cover your gas and that didn't even get you around the block most of the time, right? And it took, what, about, Stephanie did it too. It took about two weeks to go through and look at all. It was nuts. And so this is a lot better. They post the homes on the city website and everybody can vote. I think it's geolocked, if I'm not mistaken, so you have to have, actually vote from an IP within the city. And it's kind of cool. So anyway, I think it's a lot better system now too. Makes it a lot more fair. Earlier today, we had Josh from Thirsty Cow, our newest restaurant in the city of Garden Grove. I know a lot of council had gone up to his other restaurant and was it City of Industry, I believe? And, oh my God, it is awesome. I recommend it. So they're just soft opening today. I think the chamber is probably coordinating a grand opening official, but I urge everyone on the council to go try it. I guarantee you, you will not be disappointed. If it's anything like that other restaurant was, and I think this is going to be a lot even nicer. He spared no expense. I've been through there and I know our city manager's been through there and we've seen the chandeliers that he's put up and the bar top with the resin and all. It's a nice place, so. Anyway, I encourage the community to support Josh in the Thirsty Cow endeavor. And I think that's all I have. We can actually, we all had to say something.
Everybody had a lot to say tonight, yes, but I appreciate it. Thank you, colleagues, so much for sharing heartfelt sentiments to the community and sharing about, obviously, your weeks here on the council in between our council meetings. There is a lot to talk about, so I appreciate everyone's comments this evening. City manager, Kim, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Omar, our city attorney?
And nothing for me, thank you.
They want to go home.
With that, we stand adjourned.